Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Business and Industrial Development Authority Board meeting. Today is August the 10th. I call the meeting to order at 6:37 PM. We shall begin our agenda with our roll call. We shall hear from our BIDA board members first, and then mayor and council, and then any guests. My name is Melissa Jefferson. I am your chair appointee for Ward 4.
Dr. Anita Brown-Cadiz, Ward 3, vice chair.
Lisa Parker, BIDA board secretary treasurer, representant of Ward 2.
Jamelle McKenzie, Ward 1, BIDA representative.
Leslie Zen, BIDA at large.
Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Clay, Mayor Pro Tem.
Alan, councilman, Ward 3.
Chevila Ames, City Clerk.
Latonya Wiley, Fincher Denmark, City Attorney.
Sorry, Dan Lee, BIDA attorney.
Ben Camber, project manager, economic development.
Michelle Alexander, executive director, BIDA.
Sabrina Beasley, administrative assistant, economic development, assistant secretary treasurer of BIDA.
Hello, everyone. I'm Mercedes Miller, the executive director for the fabulous Georgia International Convention Center, the Gateway Arena at College Park, and the College Park Historic Golf Course.
That's why I was supposed to sit on the other side of you. Stanley Hawthorne, city manager.
I am Sherri Ong from Good Places, developer for the Iron Arts.
EJ Lee, also with Good Places.
It's Janine Hubert, I'm with College Park.
Winston Denmark, City Attorney.
And the young lady, thank you.
Dr. Lethia Williams, resident Ward 1.
Okay, I think you too.
Valerie Baker-Davis, guest of Jamelle McKenzie.
Thank you.
Audrey Dent, guest of Jamelle McKenzie.
Great, thank you, welcome, everyone. We shall begin with our item A, the approval of minutes from our July 13 regular meeting in July 27 special call meeting. Are there any corrections that need to be notated? Madam Chair, my name is miss Spelt. Okay, I just had a few, there were some spell check corrections from lines 86 through 93 for manager. There any other changes?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I didn't quite understand you.
Oh, I was asking whether there any corrections.
Yes.
Okay.
I had corrections.
Okay.
And Sabrina made them. There were two exit from executive session at the end, two statements, two different votes, only one could be.
Only one, exactly.
And she corrected the one, it was the second one that was correct, is that right?
Correct.
That's the only correction that I had.
Okay. Are there any others? Having done, may I have a request to approve the minutes from the July 13 regular meeting in July 27 special call meeting?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second by McKenzie.
Thank you, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion passes, thank you. Are there any additions, deletions, amendments, or changes to the agenda? I have an addition. Under C, we have, we'll have C. C1 as the BIDA Attorney Contract Subcommittee Review, and then C2 will add attorney rate changes. And then under the items others, other issues.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, C1 would be?
C1 would be your, the regular, the BIDA, the item that's already there, BIDA Attorney Contract Subcommittee Review. And then C2 would be attorney rate changes.
Okay.
Okay. Then under. Under item 7, under other issues. We'd like to add the strategic planning Six Sigma process, as well as stream realty. Okay, may I have a request to approve the additions to the agenda? So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those second by our secretary treasurer, Ms. Lisa Parker. Do all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Okay. That passes, thank you. Oh, yes.
Not in form of the city council.
Thank you.
He can't hear you.
Can you repeat that, Attorney Winston Denmark?
I can remove the record, not in form, to hear the council.
Okay. Okay. And Mayor and Council. Thank you. Okay, our next order of business is honoring the service of our BIDA member, Ms. Jamelle McKenzie. I'm gonna go to the podium. So tonight, we have the pleasure to honor the service of Mrs. Jamelle McKenzie. Definitely not a stranger to the city, correct? I just want to read a few words. Jamelle McKenzie has served as a member of BIDA since 2018 through 2023. She served two consecutive terms as secretary treasurer and two consecutive terms as chairman. Jamelle has shown her continued commitment to the economic development and quality of life for College Park residents through her support and recruitment of new and existing businesses through the city of College Park. Over her tenure as BIDA member, with a 100% attendance record, Jamelle has attended more than 90 ribbon cuttings, ground breakings, and grand openings. During her leadership as BIDA secretary treasurer and chairman, Jamelle has led in the securing of the largest issuance of multiple bonds on behalf of the city of College Park, totaling over $330 million, as well as oversight of the $98,311 acres of Six West Development. As a trusted steward of the community, Jamelle's voting record on BIDA reflects voting in favor of land sales and development geared at improving the landscape and physical and financial conditions of College Park, voting against projects that would not benefit the general welfare of our citizens. To develop a more sustainable, functional, professional development authority board, Jamelle has led in 2021 to create the standard operating procedures for the BIDA in collaboration with the Six Sigma Business Principles. Jamelle completed all required training for development authority members, as well as advanced development authority training through the Carl Vincent Institute of Government at the University of Georgia. We always want to thank Jamelle for all her outstanding service through our community. I always say, when you look towards leadership, especially when you're serving, becoming a public servant, you look for the three Cs in the character of an individual, that's having care, concern, and consideration for what they do for others. And I think through her years of experience through nonprofit philanthropy, you know, serving the city as a chaplain, she has done a great job being a well-rounded individual for the city of College Park. So we thank you for your service on BIDA, and we continue to love you and support you, and wish you the very best. If you could come forward. We would like to present to Jamelle a token of our appreciation for her dedicated service. The award reads, clearly College Park presented to Jamelle McKenzie for four years of commitment and service to the city of College Park, Georgia, Business and Industrial Development Authority, BIDA. December 8, okay, this is very small typing, December 8, 2018 to August 10, 2023. Thank you. Let's have a few words from our honoree.
Good evening, everyone. Oops, guess I'm a little too close to the mic. I already have a loud voice. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to our entire BIDA board and all those of you that are present today. It has been an honor and a privilege that I don't take lightly to have served the city of College Park through the Business and Industrial Development Authority for these past four years, nine months, and a couple of days. I have just been blessed to be able to be in a position to be one of those decision makers, I would say, that is rooting for our community these past five years. It has been wonderful working with all of the members of BIDA over the years. As I look through now, there's only a, I think I'm the only person that I started with that is still on BIDA. Seen a lot of change, a lot of transition on our board, but not only on our board, but in our city. I'm excited because I see us making inroads. When I first became a member of BIDA, it was 2018, I didn't actually start, we had our first meeting in 2019. But we didn't even have a, the master plan that we have now for Six West. So I've watched us go from Airport City to Six West. In terms of our development, we've seen projects come, we've seen projects go. But I can say that we're in a much better place now than we were four years ago, five years ago. And we're going to higher heights in our service to the city of College Park. I want to thank Michelle Alexander, our economic development director, who just kind of came in last year and has been taking on this large responsibility, which I think is a really large responsibility to serve, both as the economic development director and the BIDA executive director. But thank you, Michelle, for your support. It's been a pleasure to work with you. Sabrina, a pleasure to work with you. You always have that wonderful smile and that humble spirit. Ben, just getting to know you these last few months, we just love you and we just are glad to have you on board. You needed Tasha Hall Garrison, who's not at this meeting, but she was another person that we started off with in BIDA. And then we've had other persons to serve in the capacity of economic development director, which was Artie Jones, and then we even had a city manager at one time to serve as our interim. I want to thank all of you, Dan Lee. I'm gonna call some names because I really appreciate you. Dan Lee, it's been a privilege and an honor to work with you as well. Thank you for your professionalism. Thank you for, you know, going beyond the call of duty. Dan and I have had lots of conversations with one another over the past few years, and you've remained the same. Thank you very much. And of course, to my councilman, Ambrose Clay, I want to say thank you. Thank you for seeing in me the potential and the possibilities to be able to serve. I remember when Councilman Clay first bestowed this honor, which is a, it's an honor and a privilege, but it's a big job. And when he first, when you first talked to me about this, you let me know how important BIDA was to the city and the experience that I would get out of this. But it wasn't those words that impressed me the most with you, Councilman Clay. It was the fact that you said that you were putting me on this board for me to make my own decisions because you would entrust me with that ability, that you would never try to coerce me to make any decisions or to do anything, but that you would trust my ability. And I want to thank you for having the confidence in me, the trust in my ability to allow me to serve because you didn't have to reappoint me, but you did. So I want to say thank you, thank you for just everything that you have been. You've truly been a wonderful mentor for me here on the BIDA board and also as my councilman. It is you that has caused me to want to serve even greater and to give, to roll up my sleeves even more on behalf of the city of College Park. So I want to thank everybody, all of the developers, and then I want to thank all of the persons. There were several people that wanted to come out tonight when we found out that I was going to be recognized. And I want to thank those of you that were able to get here and those that are watching on the Facebook page. Thank you, Janine. Thank you, Dr. Lethia. Thank you, Tracy. Thank you, Dr. Dent, and thank you, Valerie. Thank you all for coming out. With that, thank you, board. Thank you for working with me. Thank you for working with the city of College Park on behalf of the people of College Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is the Jamestown Field Annual Coming Home Reunion. Madam Chair, make a motion to approve. Okay, so, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, although, second by Mayor Pro Tem, Clay. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so it's approved. I guess, my only, I know it's approved, but I just wanted to recognize that this has been an annual reunion with city of College Park. And, you know, I think it's quite an especial event that has continually taken place here. And I was just wondering if, since it's going to be held at the Jamestown Field, if we can have some sort of photos or just to, to show, you know, we don't know if this is going to be the last year at that location. So just to commemorate and, if we can have the communications department to take some photos for that event. That would be great. Okay, item C, the BIDA Attorney Contract Subcommittee Review. So with this item, it came to our attention that there were other board members who wanted to be a part of the subcommittee. However, the motion that was called only called for the chair, the attorney Dan Lee, and the economic development director, Michelle Alexander. So we wanted to have a discussion, and do we need to revise that motion since we want the subcommittee to be open for other members?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make just two comments. One is that I think this is a very important task. It is, if I understand it, a pro forma review of the position. As BIDA progresses, we want to make sure that we're using our attorney wisely and maximizing the input from that person. I'd like to ask that in addition to. Well, one is that I see our current attorney as being a consultant to the, to the development of the, of the, of the performance in this role moving forward. I'd also like our city manager to have input and some oversight over this process as we certainly work closely and lean heavily. And you'll be there, but, but having the sort of the 50,000-foot view of what the attorney does and how that person collaborates with BIDA, I'd like to ask. I'm not sure if I'm asking for a revision to the motion or if I'm just encouraging us to make sure that our city manager is involved in review of the process as it moves forward.
So I'm open to any thoughts? Yeah, maybe we have your guidance with that? Does she need to revise her motion or?
Previous actions and previous meetings are over and done with. If you want to change an action, you need a new motion to create whatever the function is you're looking to create.
I'd certainly be interested in hearing from others, but at that point then, I'd like to move that in addition to the named members of the pro forma review committee of the BIDA attorney, that we seek the input and close oversight of the city, of the city manager in this process.
Okay, so that's a motion, do we have a second?
Can you repeat the motion, please?
Okay. Sabrina, can you repeat my motion, please?
Dr. Cadiz would like to make a motion.
Could you speak into the mic, please? We have a real echo problem in this room, and it is very difficult to hear.
Got it.
Okay, Dr. Cadiz would like to make a motion. In addition to the names of the members on the pro forma subcommittee, to add herself and also to add the city manager to the process.
I'm not adding myself.
Oh, you're not just the city manager?
I'm just asking that the involvement of the city manager be, be.
Part of the process. And just for clarification, a point of clarification, would this be for the subcommittee or just in the whole process of how the attorney relates to BIDA?
As part of the subcommittee.
Subcommittee, okay. Do I need to repeat the whole thing?
No, just adding the, the city manager.
Yes.
So it would be Michelle, Melissa.
Melissa and city attorney, I mean, city manager, Stanley Hawthorne.
Who's the second person, you said?
The BIDA chair, attorney Dan Lee.
Oh, Dan, okay.
Yes. So it would be the four, correct?
Yes. So we have a motion on the floor? We have, we need to so move before. Does anyone, does anyone have any questions or discussion about the motion? Okay, so the motion has been read. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by member McKenzie. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any, okay, any opposes?
I oppose.
Okay, any abstentions?
I abstain.
You abstain. Okay, so the motion passes. The next item for C2 is the attorney rate changes. So our economic development director, Michelle, she emailed the board the rate changes from the original contract date from 2018 to the current contract rate changes. And so we need guidance as far as, I asked Sabrina to research if the approval of the rate changes was done by the board. I was told that there was no motion found. It was, the approval was sent by the city manager, I guess, at that time. So we're looking for guidance when it comes to third-party vendor rate changes. What is the policy that the mayor and council has, that the city has for rate changes? Does it have to come before mayor and council for an approval? Either the city manager or attorney Winston Denmark?
Madam Chair, I'm probably the nearest of the, of the people, or people in positions that you named. So I'll look to any of the others to correct me. But for third-party contracts, and if we use the city attorney as an example, but I could use a multiple number of others, those are approved by the mayor and council. And by charter, actually, the limit of authority for the city manager is up to $10,000.
Okay, is there any other input from the city?
Madam Chair, I would say that's consistent with my understanding as well.
Okay, so having that we don't have any record of an approval from the BIDA board.
You think you might want to ask me?
Yeah, sure, I mean, it concerns your rate, so yes, exactly.
All this has gone on, and you've never asked me. Not one person has approached me to ask me about this.
Well, I think that you did respond to the correspondence because I think you said that it was approved by the city manager.
But nobody, you've not called me, you've not asked me one thing about it. And if I hadn't spoken up then, you wouldn't have asked me. You don't see a problem in that?
No, I don't.
Well, you need to pay closer attention to it.
So pay, it's a, you, you are.
Here's how the process works. I submit a bill, it's reviewed by at least three people in the city. I've never had one challenged, not one, not a single one, in five years. The rate changes have occurred via the city manager every single time. And the only reason that BIDA hasn't participated in it is because BIDA doesn't pay it. The money comes from the city. And at the same time, I don't know, we've been through maybe four chair people. We've been through four city managers, we've been through at least two directors. Never questioned. So if, I think what happens, and you will find this in the charter, city, or BIDA, when you start down a road like this, you got to have a reason for it.
So our reason is we're moving towards a Six Sigma process to validate our processes and procedures. If I haven't made myself clear, as a chair of this board, I am an advocate of protocol, process, protocol, policy, process, procedures, and then eventually auditing. Now, if our core business, as I explained when we discussed your contract previously, we didn't have a current contract. And the purpose of this is to have proper representation by our board representing you as a third-party attorney. And I would expect, as an attorney, you would understand that. Now, this has nothing to question about. Excuse me, I was not finished speaking. I was not finished speaking, Attorney Lee. You are out of order. I was not finished speaking.
I am not out of order.
You are out of order.
Not.
You are.
You want to follow the charter.
I am out of, you are out of order.
Not you individually.
You are out of order. I was not finished speaking. This is not an individual circumstance. This is a policy. Mayor and council of City of College Park provides us policy. If mayor and council stated that their policy is that third-party vendor contract rates has to be approved by mayor and council, I would expect that. And this has not been done. So are you telling me that I should not question a policy that has been violated?
I'm telling you that you don't know what you're talking about. The charter doesn't allow individualism on this board. The board acts together. And there's not been one conversation had about this at a board meeting. So there must have been many conversations outside of the board meeting, which I would submit to you is a violation of the open meetings law. And back to the story that should be told is not one person has complained about this until you came along. And I've not heard one complain about it.
Madam Chair.
Yes, city manager.
I'd like to offer some clarity. Because one of the things that you said was when you became aware of the practice and in sharing with this board that approval of change in rates for the BIDA attorney has been by the city manager. Practice doesn't make it right. And you've got a new city manager. I will not be approving such rates without the proper governing body approving it. Now, I'm not casting any blame on past practice. But I'm the new city manager. And one of the things, in fact, it's the first thing that's listed in the charter and the city manager's responsibilities is to faithfully and properly ensure, I'm paraphrasing, the execution of the laws and ordinances of the City of College Park. So I recognize that we may be talking about a gray area. And we may have past precedents. And quite frankly, I think the spending level, spending authority, because it's old, dating way back, of $10,000 is low for a chief administrative officer. But that's an issue that would have to be taken up with the charter, not even the governing body on its own. But that limit alone, because it's a cumulative cost ultimately, would be above my authority. BIDA is different. Third parties are different. So I'm not trying to be the lawyer in the room. But I think it is a legitimate issue that is raised. Now, I'm going to go one step further. And people can perceive it or take it as they determine. But I'm new. I see from my own perspective. I make my own assessment of things. And I've been very particular to say I'm coming in to listen and to learn. And I'm going to do that for the entirety of my tenure. But at this point, it's going in five months, which in some ways is sufficient to start to make some assessments. And I don't have any personal issues, but I've got a professional responsibility, particularly in how I view and believe that is proper. And I'm talking about the BIDA attorney. So let's take BIDA attorney out of the equation. Because that person is beyond my purview as manager. But the rest of your staff that support you, they are my purview. So I'm not going to say anything to you this evening that I haven't already said to them, to the entirety of my staff. We don't have to like any governing body members. And I guess this is a debate whether BIDA members are governing body members. But you're at least the appointees of the governing body members of the City of College Park who have been elected by the electorate, the people of College Park. And that is a place that is well-earned, each one of them. I don't have to agree with the politics, with their positions, but they are the governing body. And there's a level of deference that should go with that. And across this organization, particularly of the people that I have purview over, across the organization, I'm talking about governing body members, but I'm also talking about BIDA board members. I haven't seen in all cases the proper respect for the relationships. Staff is here to serve. We're public servants. We're here to serve the public, first of all, the community. And then the next highest level, what the community has chosen, what the electorate has chosen, are their governing body members. And they may reelect them or not. But until the public makes a change. And one of my observations, including up until this meeting, probably during this meeting, is not the proper respect and deference. And I'll give examples, and this has gone on too long, and I called it out today. And all of you aren't aware of this. But what I see, and I've got to teach staff, so recognize I'm a coach, I have to bring people along. But we don't get involved in politics, we don't take positions, we don't take sides. We can have opinions. But I've seen cases of simple information being requested from members of the governing body, from members of this body, from the Chair. And it's almost a fight. And people will justify it. I want to make sure that I'm doing the right things and absolutely support that. But I've seen enough of the pattern. So I don't know what the answer is to the question of how the BIDA attorney's rate of pay should be adjusted in the future. But it won't be as it has been done in the past.
Thank you, city manager. Is there any discussion from the board members? Jamelle, with you having the most years of experience here, in what has been your view of the policy when it comes to the rate changes approval from the BIDA board?
I wasn't aware that the board hadn't been, this is just not in my recollection that the board hadn't been involved in the rate changes. But it does seem like it would be something that should go through the board. Anything that we do financially still goes through the board. But I wouldn't, like I said, I don't really want to single out one particular person or incident. I kind of have a problem with us having this conversation right now. And because it can, and I'm seeing the tension, I'm sensing the tension, seeing what's going on right now. And I don't want us to go into some type of a match where it appears as though we're trying to make an example of a particular individual. I think that in terms of even this discussion of how we are to handle finances for our contractors, it maybe needs to be done at another time in another space. But I do believe that we need to really just move forward, move on right now. I think what the city manager has said to us is, you know, it is good to know the past because if you don't know your past, you can repeat it in the future. So I think we're aware that there are some situations that may not be clear. And I think that the, since you've asked me, that the path to follow at this moment is let's just get it together for the future. And there is a committee that has been established to deal specifically with the attorney's contract. And I feel, since you're asking me, that let all that be discussed when that committee discusses. Let's not continue to discuss this meeting after meeting. It is not a good look. It's not a good feel. It's very uncomfortable. I think that we just need to let the committee meet, determine what you want to do as far as an attorney. It's my last meeting, I think, anyway, so I can say what I want to say. But let's let the committee handle it. And if we want to discuss how procedure should be done in BIDA, let's either have a workshop session or some special meeting to determine that or work it out with our staff and have that brought to the BIDA board. But I just don't think that we should continue this now.
Thank you, Member McKenzie. So my concern is always policy. And I will always expect us to follow policy. So that's the reason why this was brought up. And I look for policy direction from mayor and council. And that's the purpose of this agenda item. And so now that we know what the policy is and now that our city manager has provided us guidance, we shall move forward. But we shall understand that you have two board members that are Six Sigma certified. And I cannot expect in my leadership, with me having led in several executive positions and being black belt certified in Six Sigma, to go without understanding what the quality control is or what changes need to be made. So we don't need to take it personal, but we need to adhere to policy.
May I ask a question, please?
Sure.
Is this policy something that could have been asked outside of the meeting from the city manager or the city attorney, what the policy is to approve third-party vendors?
That's possible, but I'm asking it here.
Right, but we could have asked it outside of the meeting and resolved it, not having all this brouhaha. It seems like there's a lot of emotion and a lot of wasted time happening with this particular subject.
Well, thank you, Members En, for your statement. It's not a waste of time as far as I'm concerned. I am one member of this body board. So therefore, if something needs to be brought forth, then I feel as Chair, brought forth to the board, I will bring it forth. So whether it's done through email, whether it's done at the meeting, I found it necessary to bring it here for our meeting.
Madam Chair, may I? May I speak?
Sure.
Sure, okay, thank you. So I think that, you know, I'm really, it's a great thing to have Six Sigma leadership here within our board leadership. And that does bring a lot to us as an organization. And so, and I do like the fact that you all are trying to carry on as we incepted standard operating procedures. And now, you know, just trying to make sure that everything becomes even more user-friendly, that we kind of understand if somebody could just come in to BIDA, pick up and know exactly what needs to be done. So I do, I'm grateful for you and Dr. Katus coming and bringing this. But I still want to echo that I think that what would be helpful is to maybe have, instead of bringing this into some of our general meetings, is to establish some type of, if we need to do another retreat or if there needs to be, you know, a specific meeting geared towards, a special meeting geared towards working out some of the issues that the two of you specifically, because you all may be able to see that there's processes that need to be done that we're not doing. So I just want to recommend again that we find another means rather than having to discuss some of these in the general meeting.
Thank you, Member McKenzie. Yes, and we shall discuss other Six Sigma goals further in our agenda tonight. Our next item of business is our financial report. Is Athia here or, okay, it will be done for Mr. Edwall, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can y'all hear me? Is that thing on? They can't hear you as well. So I don't know, do y'all have it in front of you in the package?
Yes.
I don't know how to make it go up on that screen.
Did anybody give it to them? Did y'all give them that report? Because they didn't give it to the A P P.
Y'all have it in your package?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, ma'am, that's it. And so I'd make sure all my board members have it before I get started. Is it, damn. Oh, sure, it looks like an Excel spreadsheet.
It should be one page.
Yeah. It was on the table when you came in.
Yes.
So I'd like to direct your attention to the column in the far right that says adopted 24 budget. You can see the revenues are a million, one thirty-three for rentals and commissions. And other would be the pilot payments that we have on the various tax abatement things that we have. Rentals and commissions are the one eighth to one percent fees that you have, plus the rental rates for leasing the land for some of the projects. And we have a budget of four million and fifty-eight thousand dollars for 24. If you compare it to the budget, to the actual for the fourth quarter was three million and six. And the fourth quarter, the actual fourth quarters for the whole year, if you look at the budget for 23, the budget was four million, three forty-four, four million, four thirty-four. So revenues came in eight hundred thousand dollars lower than what we had budgeted. Why is that? Well, so one pilot payment person, the office, didn't pay about seven hundred thousand dollars. And y'all know Danny Lee is suing them and has been, I've been helping him with mediation. And they may, I don't know, tonight in executive session, Attorney Lee, if you're going to bring up the potential settlement? You want to give us an update on your last conversation with the bond lawyer on the other side? So should I do it in executive session?
Yeah, shouldn't it be in the executive session?
It has to be.
Yes, the attorney update would be in the executive session with all losses.
So that seven hundred thousand of that and the other hundred thousand each year, accounting-wise, some of the pilot payments are written off through the balance sheet and that accounts for the other hundred thousand dollars less. If we go down to expenses for 24, I'm in the last column on the right, the adopted 24 budget's a million, six thousand dollars for expenses. Compare it to fourth quarter for the year for 23. Remember, this is a year July 1 to June 30, 2023, July 1 of '22 to June 30, '23. Expenses were a million, six ninety-four compared to a budget of nine twenty-two. So why were the expenses so much greater? Years ago, the city in BIDA hired a company, starts with a C, to do brownfield, all kind of Cordino or something like that. That's it. And the expenses in fiscal year 23 for those brownfield things were six hundred and thirty-three thousand. It was to be paid for from a grant. Artie Jones, the previous Economic Development Director, applied for a grant and got it. The revenues for that grant came in last week, which is in August and July. So it was split a fiscal year. So the expenses show up in 23. Your revenues for 24 are going to look much greater than they should be. And it's just the way accounting works. You take a snapshot on June 30th and we weren't able to recognize the revenues and expenses in the same year. Go down, I'm under actual fourth quarter. You can see the gain on sale of assets was a million, four hundred and seventy-two thousand. I think the biggest chunk of that was Northside Hospital. We had budgeted three and a half million, but we only got a million, four seventy-two. For 24, because we've budgeted so many years, revenues that didn't come in from sale of land, we did a budget of zero for the sale of land. However, we are expecting big sales for lands in fiscal year 24. And I'm hoping it'll be somewhere around twelve, twelve to fifteen million dollars of what I know today. But the budget is zero. But the budget is zero for that. Uh, capital outlay, land purchase.
Yep.
You know, at our last meeting last month, there was a lot of, we had the real estate folks in and you all were going to meet and talk about that. Um, they presented various pieces of land for you to buy totaling, seemed like over a million dollars. We only have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the budget for that. And so BIDA needs to work with city manager and city staff to up that budget if we want to buy more land. And how the city would pay for it is appropriation out of fund balance, because they don't have it in their budget either. Then you look down at the debt service, interest expense and fiscal charges. If y'all remember, we did the restructuring of the debt to lower the debt service. And you can see in twenty-three, in twenty-three, the actual was three million three eight six versus three million three four four. And for twenty-four, the budget is four million seven nine five. We're picking back up to a regular payment schedule after we sort of took a payment holiday during COVID. Going down to the, what I call the net income for fourth quarter for fiscal year twenty-three, we had a net loss of eighty-one thousand dollars. Um, that's almost break even. That's close enough of government work. For the adopted twenty-four budget, we had a million nine ninety-three is a net loss. You go down to the bottom, how do we account for that? We have a transfer in mostly from hotel motel tax. And then fiscal year uh, two thousand and twenty-three, the transfers in came from seven hundred twenty-five thousand of hotel motel tax, two hundred fifty thousand from the GICC special district tax. That's a milliliter of twenty mils on the district around this building. And then five hundred sixty-three thousand for car rental tax. For twenty-four, for the budget, how we fund the deficit is a million one seventy-eight from hotel motel tax, two hundred fifty-two thousand from the GICC special district tax and five hundred sixty-two thousand from car rental tax. Um, I would, would like to point out to y'all that um, BIDA is not meant to be a business that makes money. It'd be wonderful if we do, but you have so many things that the city has used you for as a tool to get things done, that it has revenue sources to come from hotel motel tax and car rental tax. And so it's not a bad thing that you have to have those transfers in. They were planned for whenever we did a specific project. Madam Chair, that's it for my presentation.
Okay, are there any questions? I only have, I have, um, I'm sorry.
I have a question. Why is there no budget for sale of land, but you project twelve million in sales?
So for previous years, Alfie and I, working with Artie when he was here, we would budget sales and then um, we didn't sell anything. You, you know, we've had a lot of things fall through and the auditors would give us a hard time and then make us start writing off the debt that BIDA owes to the general fund. And they'd write it off such that I couldn't recollect it. And so one of the reasons that y'all will take up later tonight is intergovernmental contract. I wanted something other than just the books and records to recognize legally for the auditors that this debt's getting paid. And so by not budgeting it, if we get it, the auditors say, well, that's great. But if I budget it and I don't get it, they think it's a negative. So I decided to play the game.
Madam Chair.
Sure.
Madam Chair.
Attorney Lee, yes.
Ed, if you would, while you're right there on that subject, mention the relationship of that issue to the IGA that the board has been reviewing.
Yes, sir. So y'all can see how the only legal document memorialized the various money that the general fund and other funds have loaned to the BIDA fund are these books and records. There's, there's no promissory note, there's no, and so I've sent y'all an email about it. You know, you all created nineteen eighty and so for forty-three years, we just sort of operated on a ad hoc basis. And we'd sometimes sit around and meet and everybody try to remember what we did so that we could make a plan. And so I applaud y'all amount of policies. And that's what the IGA is about, is to have some kind of legal document so that the auditors and the credit rating agencies, I can hand it to them and they don't have to look at these books and records. Is that okay, Attorney Lee?
That's exactly it.
Yes.
Um, my question is, for the project that we have closed, where does the earnest money or escrow get recorded?
So uh, it doesn't. Um, if we have money in escrow, it goes into, there's a lady named Michelle, what's her name, Attorney Lee?
Rothmeyer?
Michelle Rothmeyer.
Okay.
It goes in her escrow account, so it still belongs to those other people till we take it.
Okay, and then once they have?
Once we take it, it'll go into that line called gain on sale of capital assets.
Okay.
So giving an example, Madam Chair, that million four seventy-two five hundred, that was Northside Hospital. They put money in escrow in earnest, but we did not recognize it on our books and records. But when it closed, we recognized that, plus the rest of the money they paid.
Okay, so you don't placeholder it? You wait until it, okay. Um, and then does this include the admin budget or not? This is just?
Yes, ma'am. So up there in the million, up there where it says operating expenses, you have depreciation and it has other operating expenses?
Okay, here.
All the admin is in that.
That's the admin in there, okay. Okay.
And, and you know, sometimes I give you all the massive detailed stuff. When the auditors actually make their journal entries, I'll give you an actual detail of what all that money is.
Exactly. Are there any further questions? Okay, having none.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Our next um, order of service is the intergovernmental agreement IGA presentation.
So um, Madam Alexander, do you want me to start and then we turn it over to Ms. Latonya Wiley, who prepared the IGA? How would you like to have?
Yeah. The IGA item is from um, City Attorney's Office and Ed, Ed Wall and Althea. So um, he's just asking, do you prefer the financial focus of it, impetus? Or do you want the full um, presentation of, of the rest of the document or did you want to?
Well, I guess the full presentation, because you have to understand, we, it hasn't been presented to the board. I know it was presented to Mayor and Council, but since it hasn't been presented to the board, we would like the courtesy of the presentation.
If you don't mind, Madam Chair, I'll start, if it's okay with you, Latonya, I'll do the thirty-five thousand foot level and then when I brought you into the process, I'll turn it over to you.
That's perfect, thank you.
So, uh, Madam Chair, you've heard me talk about a little while ago, this year Standard and Coors and Moody's did their annual review of College Park. They had not done it in about two and a half years and they're supposed to do it every year. And we were so lucky, because when COVID hit and every, and we, you know, we caught the flu and it was awful. We would have gotten a rating downgrade if they'd done a rating review on us in twenty-one or twenty-twenty, twenty-one or twenty-two. But they did it this spring and uh, by that time, all the things that Mayor and Council had done and the economy had picked up, our numbers looked so much better. But during that rating review, they asked about the debts and the balance sheet that we have on these books and records and they said it'd been out there for a long time. What, what comfort did they have it was going to get paid? So I used my salesmanship and say, you know, we got all this land at Six West, we got land at Jamestown. We're going to sell that property. And they said, well, no, do you have like a promissory note? And I said, no, what we've always done since nineteen eighty, we just made a due-to, due-from on the books and records. Some of this debt is called, uh, due-to, due-from, some of it, the auditors call it an advance. And um, I'm not really sure what the difference is, but um, it means something to the auditors. And um, so I got to thinking about that, I don't, you know, if any of us borrow money from one another, we'd probably build Attorney Lee and he'd draw up a promissory note. And we don't have any of that. And so I got to thinking about it, nearly every client I got that has a development authority, they have intergovernmental contract between the two of them. When you all do the bond issues, there is an intergovernmental contract between BIDA and the city governing what all happens about that bond issue. When it was the arena, it was about the car rental tax and whether the city was named agent to carry out the construction of it, rather than you having to let the bids for the construction. And so, and there's just a myriad of details on every project. This building, the FAA building, the public safety building, I could go on and on. And so I didn't have one on all those due-to, due-froms, as you heard me totaling up to thirteen million dollars. The auditors have made us write that off to the day on, on the books and records of about ten million. But the city really was expecting to get paid back to thirteen million. And so um, um, the auditor, when they were doing their June thirty-twenty-two audit report, um, Ms. Florid Bradley and I, we had knockdown dragouts, trying to get them not to write off more of that debt. And in twenty-two, I think they wrote off four million dollars of it. And we didn't have a document to say, well, this is, this is memorialized, we're going to get it back. And so Article One's about that. I added Article Two in my conversations with Ms. Latonya Wiley, who Winston Denmark had put with me to get it drafted, because you all count on the city to handle all your functions. They hire your executive director, they hire Althea Florid Bradley to handle all your books and records. I had about, I don't know, eighteen different uh, intergovernmental contracts from other clients. Um, Winston and his crew represent, I don't know, twenty cities or so, they had a bunch as well. And so Ms. Latonya Wiley took those that she had, plus the ones that I had, and she came up with the first draft. And so as I turn it over to her, I just want y'all to know, nobody was doing this trying to take away your power or trying to take away any of your authority. Um, there's nothing magic about the words in Article One or Article Two. And I was careful to explain that to Mayor and Council when I brought it to them. It is a negotiation between you and Mayor and Council. Both of you have to agree. And so this is not a take it or leave it for you. It's just starting the process to talk about it and y'all understand why I, as your financial advisor, want you to have it. But what's in it, the details, is a negotiation between you and Mayor and Council. So I'd like to, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, turn it over to Ms. Wiley.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, Madam Chair, members of the board and members of council, uh, good evening. My name is Latonya Wiley, as I originally introduced myself and I work with Venture Denmark. Um, when Ed first brought this matter to our attention, it was always, always based upon the notion that the city's financial auditors, the credit uh, rating agencies, uh, needed something in place and wanted something in place to show how these outstanding obligations of the city were secured and whether they were secured. And what the task was, was to memorialize what we understood to be um, the manner of operations between these two entities, meaning the city and the BIDA board for the last forty-three years. And the first task that um, I undertook was to under, look, take a look at the charter, the constitutional amendment creating BIDA, um, examining the uh, applicable laws to municipalities and development authorities and understanding from an anecdotal historical um, view how the two entities have operated over the last forty-plus years. And so taking all of those items into consideration, we undertook the process of trying to create a document that was workable, practical and consistent with the law, the intent of the creation of BIDA and the constitutional amendment and the intent of the parties, as you all have undertook, to acquire um, in BIDA's name on behalf of the city, um, some five hundred odd parcels of property or more that currently exist for which there is no binding single document that discusses how this property will be held and maintained. And so this document that is um, before you, is, was only intended to be a proposal as Ed has stated and as the council has indicated. And of course, we want to have that dialogue with you through your council. And I'll ask Mr. Lee to please just intervene at any time to assist and or clarify anything I am saying, sir. So, or if I miss something, please, please um, intervene. Um, there are just three main provisions of this particular document and it governs um, the fact that BIDA operates as a conduit for the city to do things that the city can't do directly under Georgia law. And in recognition of that fact, because BIDA is operating as a conduit, a financial conduit, the agreement seeks to establish without question that there's a fiduciary relationship that exists between BIDA and the city. And we know what that means, in the same manner that a fiduciary relationship exists between your council and yourself, or your banker and yourself, or your doctor and yourself. That means that BIDA acts in the best interest of the city. That the city, um, as the elected governing authority, on behalf of the, the citizens of College Park, will pledge public monies and, and, and fund certain activities of BIDA. And for doing that, BIDA owes a fiduciary relationship to the city and to the citizens um, to act in the best interest of the entity at all times. And so that's the first thing and one of the most important things that I think we wanted to establish um, at the very outset. Um, the charter itself, in paragraph twenty-three of your charter, the constitutional amendment creating BIDA, uses the word trust. So this is not a word or a phrase or a notion that we just decided, I've been there to implement to this agreement. It memorializes of the term that's in your charter, which says that all money received or that arises under your authority created under the amendment shall be trust funds. And so we ca- carry that provision forward in this particular proposal to you. Article Two is just um, a, uh, an acknowledgement of what is already happening and what has been happening. And that, that is that the city staff, professional city staff, your finance director, um, your executive director, um, their planning staff, they all work for BIDA in carrying out the mutual purpose, work for the city principally, but they provide services to BIDA in furtherance of the mutual and shared commitment that the two entities have engaged in and forged over the past forty years and in perpetuity, uh, long after we're all gone. So the charter allows the um, hiring of staff, however, what has been done historically and what I understood to be the continual intention of the party was to use the professional services of city staff who are bound by rules and regulations, as you mentioned, Madam Chair, of the city. Those staff members will be under the direct supervision of the city manager at all times, accountable to the city manager. The city manager, as I understand, has a relationship with you so that there is something with the board and his staff that needs addressing that can be done in an orderly way, as the chair has said, she likes order. And we try to be consistent with that and be very um, clear about what those duties and obligations are. Overall, um, there's nothing, as Ed said, that's magical or uh, there's no hidden terms or anything. This is a very transparent document that we would like for you all to consider. And if there are questions, we can work directly with Mr. Lee in resolving those questions or concerns that the board may have. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions about any specific provisions um, that is, that is for you in this document, if there are any.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're open for discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair. I, I want to take sort of a, a high level view and go back to the um, I, I heard the discussion at council when you first presented. And I, I've got sort of the red flag about Article Two and what, what that implies and what that means. And I think it was sort of a consensus there that, oh, that's where the, where the, it's going to become a tight fit. So if I look back and I understand there's what, only four, five, whatever business development authorities in the state that are actually driven by a charter from the state as opposed to something that came to being in different ways. And so what, why was, what was the purpose of that? Of separating it out so that it became a state-chartered institution as opposed to what it was in other cities? And that being said, um, well, this, this, I, I'd like to get, start there. Why, why do we have it as a state charter and what differentiates that from others?
Is it okay if I answer, Madam Chair?
Sure. Sure.
So in 1969, the state legislature passed something called the Development Authorities Law. And so they call, we call those statutory development authorities. And they have limited powers that they derive right from that 1969 law. All the way back to the '40s, some authorities were created pursuant to a constitutional amendment. Your authority, BIDA, is a constitutional amendment authority. So it doesn't derive its powers from that 1969 Development Authorities Law. You derive your powers from the law, the legislation, that the House and the Senate and the governor signed, that actually created BIDA. And so everyone's unique. The Albany Payroll Development Authority was created in the '40s, it's a constitutional amendment authority, and it's got all kind of squarely language that the hateville BIDA doesn't have, or that East Point BIDA doesn't have. East Point, Haightville, and College Park all have something called a BIDA.
Right.
They all happened to be represented at the same time by a fellow named George Glaze. And so he drafted those three bills, sent it to the legislature, and it was passed. And so why is it a constitutional authority? The 1969 Development Authority Law says that development authorities are created solely for the purpose of promotion of trade, industry, commerce, and employment opportunities. And what the Georgia Supreme Court decided that meant was that those kinds of authorities can only do projects for for-profit companies. Those authorities cannot do governmental projects. Constitutional authority can do whatever's in its constitutional language. Some authorities, even though they're constitutional, only have that promotion of trade, industry, commerce, and employment opportunities of public purpose. Yours is different. George Glaze drafted it that way. And yours allows you to do governmental projects. The city has used you to build this building, the FAA building, the public safety building, the arena, I don't know, I could go on and on. But only a constitutional authority can do that. So a city that only has a statutory development authority, they have to go and create another authority to do what you can do. So some of them create an urban redevelopment agency called a URA. Some go to the legislature and get a building authority. Fulton County has a Fulton Building Authority. Some cities get something called a Public Facilities Authority. Stockbridge has that. And so why, why do you have to create an authority? Georgia law has a provision in the constitution that says debt is defined as any obligation determined which is greater than one year. And so if you issue debt, and you secure it with taxes, whether it's sales tax or property tax, you have to have a voter referendum. There's a provision from the '30s called the Intergovernmental Contracts Clause in the Georgia Constitution, that says one political subdivision can contract with another political subdivision for 50 years for services or facilities they each empower to perform. And so smart bond lawyers, like Winston Denmark and Dan Lee, they came up with this idea that an authority could issue revenue bonds, and secure it with an intergovernmental contract from the city, or county, or even school board. And the city or county school board can use taxes, not to pay the debt, but to pay their obligation under the intergovernmental contract. When those taxes get washed through that intergovernmental contract, they become revenues to you, hence revenue bonds. So the reason you have a constitutional amendment charter, as you call it, was because the city wanted a more powerful authority than they could get by just creating a development authority under the 1969 law.
Ed, if I could just inject this, more power in a borrowing scenario. Operationally, there is very little difference between a legislated authority and a constitutional authority, that not only the legislature signed off on, but the voters of the local government and the local community voted on. And Ed's done a great job pointing out why you would want, and the previous city attorney was right, in getting a constitutional authority that has wide-range ability to borrow in wide-range situations. He leaves out the downside. To change that charter, you got to go through the same process. Whereas the others, you go back to legislature, some of them can be changed by ordinance. This one has to be done the other way. But, and I think I've got a hint of this in your question, operationally, it doesn't give a lot of directions, because, just like Ed was talking about, like Winston can testify to, no other development authority that I know of or have represented has an ongoing project like College Park BIDA. Sandy Springs Development Authority has an IGA with Sandy Springs City Government. Troup County, Georgia, has one with the Troup County Development Authority, for the big Kia plant down there, we wrote. That is what the operation of the Development Authority is for, is to be that debt conduit. This one is different, because of the ongoing project. That's the difference. But it's not, it's not shown in the charter in any way, is that reflected? Except that, as Ed said, because it's a constitutional authority, you have the authority to do that kind of business, the broader ability to do that kind of business.
So Dr. Cates, I feel like you asked me what time it was, and I told you how the watch worked.
(laughing). I hear you, I'm sorry.
I said, I feel like you asked me what time it was, and I told you how the watch worked.
(laughing). No, I was looking for where the seeds of discontent could lie, that, that because we see ourselves as so different, why, you know?
I can tell you. In reviewing this, it's exactly what we just talked about, the different work that goes on at BIDA is different than what would fit into the other IGAs. And so my review of the good work that has been done, the only issue to me, as your lawyer, is how deeply do you go in declaring what those intricate things that this authority does partnering with the city are? Or do you allow some leeway in, like has gone on, the city manager manages the operation with transparency to the board? But the day-to-day operation of it, hiring employees, managing employees, has fallen to the city. And as it's proposed right now, as was mentioned earlier, historically, and this document reflects that history. And just as we started this meeting tonight, that's where some of it can be, that there appears to be a different idea about what the BIDA board members want compared to what has gone on in the past.
Well, I think for me, it does have an issue of if we disagree with something, the way something is being done. And, you know, you've heard Six Sigma's probably till you're sick of hearing it, but one of the issues for me, and I agree wholeheartedly, is that you want to understand what the process is. When I look over, having been on BIDA for two years, and I look at every single property that's come by, just through keeping my own records, I can't see any progress being made. And so it feels, this is just my bottom-line gut level, you're asking us to turn over the day-to-day operations, or to continue the day-to-day operations with an executing agency that just hasn't seemed to be successful? Is it really BIDA that's so hard to get through? Or is it the support staff not, you know, impugning anybody's reputation, that BIDA is locktied to dealing with? How do we improve that?
When you say not getting done, you mean deals aren't being consummated?
Well, I'm telling you, when I look back over my records of meetings for the last two years, I am hard-pressed to see documented a process that doesn't hit a snap, foo somewhere along the line, that delays a PSA, that sends it back 50 million times, I'm exaggerating, of course. But, you know, where's the progress here? And why aren't we making progress? And why do we get complaints? In consummation? Well, we've got, aside from Sixth West, we had a tour with Artie two years ago, there's lots of property that I don't even, that is owned by the city or by BIDA, and I just don't see it moving anywhere. It's the same vacant lot, overgrown lot, that was here two years ago, or 10 years ago, when I moved to College Park. So as a, as a member of this board, whose responsibility is to see that progress, I'm wanting to understand, now, where are the hangups here? Can we follow this progress from soup to nuts? From beginning to end? And see, where are the snags? That's all we're talking about when we're talking about process. And now you're asking us, in Section 2 of this, to tie ourselves to a process, or the executives of a process, that I'm like, well, I don't know. Am I going to be bound? Am I just rubber stamping? You know, what is my purpose here on BIDA? Do I have any right to say, wait a minute, we don't want to do that, we don't think this is a good idea? So it all comes down to that for me. It's not about this per se. I think an agreement that's in writing is probably a very good thing, but why would I want to hitch in you to codify that relationship if that relationship historically has not given rise to what our goal is, and what our intention is, and what our purpose is as BIDA, and as the city, and as BIDA as an instrument of the city? If I don't have any leverage, if Section 2 has taken all of that away from me, and I'm just rubber stamping, you know, why am I here? Why am I doing this? And so for me, that's the crux of the issue. You know, that's my dilemma.
If I may, Dr. Cates, so the issue isn't you being a rubber stamp, the issue is whenever you're going to operate as a, as a board, you're going to need staff. And that staff obviously is going to be provided by the city, because the city, in this relationship, has the purse to provide the staff, the facilities, and such. And so it's that simple. The board at all times retains the authority to direct the staff as it sees fit. And so there's nothing about the relationship that divests the board of its managerial authority. And if you look back at the time horizon, you talk about your time on BIDA, if you expand the time horizon just a little bit, and you'll see that this BIDA board has been instrumental in economic development in this city, and I think the building that we sit in is Exhibit A, in that, and Ed has pointed out other fantastic things that the BIDA board has accomplished over the years. And I think that our experience, when COVID changed the world for a time, may create a false impression of stagnation and do-nothingness. But I think that we're about to come out of that period, and I think there are great things ahead, and that might be my eternal optimism speaking, but I think we all have an abiding faith in BIDA, its relationship with the city, and the possibilities. And I think Sixth West is going to be Exhibit B, as another shining example of what the cooperation between BIDA and the city can accomplish that will transform this city and this region. And so there's nothing about this agreement that wants to lessen the role of BIDA, compromise your autonomy, your considered judgment, in helping to shape the development of the city of College Park. It's just to memorialize the relationship, to establish that the city is going to provide professional staff for you, whether it be the Economic Development Director, your own attorney, so you can at all times exercise your own independent judgment, and do what you feel is best, as Mr. Kendi said, when Councilman Clay appointed her, so that she could make her own decisions. And that's all this is doing. But the real catalyst and impetus for this is what Mr. Wall was talking about, you know, the credit rating agencies and the auditors, that's what drives it. But while we're under the hood tinkering, it's always a good idea to kind of establish protocols and procedures. And so, you know, you're not being bamboozled here, we're all friends and partners, and we're trying to work together to achieve a common end, and this agreement, I think, is instrumental in that regard.
Can I, I just wanted to, this thing is so loud, okay. Just kind of piggybacking on what Attorney Denmark, and responding to you as well, Anita, being that I've been on this board, I guess, longer than anyone else here, except for Councilman Clay, who's been on a few times as our mayor pro temp. When I first came on BIDA five years ago, we, there is a big difference, and just for those of you that have been here for the past three years or less, we did operate, I think one of the concerns may be, is what I hear Anita saying, is that how can we commit to this when it's having us do what we've been doing? It's basically, it's just validating and saying, this is the way we're going to keep on doing it, because for the new members that have come on, things have not been the way that they were four or five years ago. In terms of, we have gone through a COVID pandemic in the past three years. Then we have had a lot of transition, in terms of the leadership of economic development, the city. So for our newer members who come on, you're seeing things in transition, and so it's, I mean, what I'm saying, for myself, when I came here, it was pretty much solid, it was pretty established, and we were doing this. But over these last few years, that, because again, and it's not anybody's, it's not anybody's fault, things have just happened. I mean, we have developers that have not necessarily, that have been trying to hang on with us, and maybe getting different messages, because we've been going through a transition, and as a city. So I don't want us to throw out the baby with the bathwater, because we are looking at what we have dealt with in the last couple of years, and say that this document is off. But I think maybe what the board may be saying, now, what has happened as a result of the transition, I'm seeing a board, and the reason I said that I see BIDA as doing better now, or we've progressed over the past five years, not necessarily because of deals being closed, but because I see that there is an intentional activity to make sure that we have processes in place, and that it is indisputable that the way we govern ourselves can be replicated, can be understood. Anyone can come in, get on this board, and have an understanding of how we operate, so that our developers can come to economic development, or to stream reality, and they will know exactly what BIDA needs, what BIDA requires, what city council requires, so that we can get rid of some of those gray areas, some of the issues. So our newer members have been seeing transition, they have been seeing a lot of things not necessarily gelling, but at the same time, we are on a positive road. And that positive road is putting the processes in place. That positive road is the discussions of putting together some type of an agreement where we all understand where we're coming from. So I can't say that this is it, because maybe our Six Sigma persons who have processed may want to look at this and see some things that maybe can be improved in the way that we used to do it, versus how we, you know, do we continue to do what we've been doing? But at the same time, let's not get rid of what we've done until we have a better understanding of where we're at, if that makes any sense.
Excuse me, excuse me. Madam Chair, I don't know, I'm a citizen of College Park, and I may be speaking out of turn, but I would just like to interject some questions that I have. And I've been here in College Park since 1959, and I live over in that area that you all develop in called Sixth West. I grew up over there, I'm the only homeowner left in that particular area, and I would just like to get a little insight, but if I'm speaking out of turn, I will wait to another turn, but I was late getting here. But there are some questions that I want to ask this staff, BIDA, about some concerns that I have, and, excuse me, I think you all may be able to shed a little insight on questions that I need to have answered, because I can't get it at the city council meeting.
Okay, thank you for your...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Some of you all in here know me, some of you all don't, some of you all will, and some of you all won't. But my name is Larry Brady Evans, and I reside at 2112 West Princeton Avenue, College Park, Georgia, and I've been here all my life, 64 years. And I've been here all my life, 64 years. But go ahead, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Evans, for your input. We will have an opportunity within our agenda under our item of other issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask a question, please?
Okay. These microphones are very loud. Yes, members in.
So my understanding about this, what was put into our packet about the agreement between BIDA and the city is being asked for by Moody's for the, the assessment of our financial, not liquidity, but soundness, let's say. Is that correct?
I didn't ask for it specifically. In my discussion, in Althea's discussion with them, we didn't have a document to show that memorialized the debt vote.
Is that the reason why this is being put in? So that we can memorialize that if we borrow money from the general fund, we will pay it back? Correct? So all of this, and, and even if that weren't the case, do we have the right as the BIDA board to say, we don't like this? Isn't, isn't there the legality of how the BIDA board is set up by the charter and the legislature?
You're, you're exactly right, Leslie, on that point. And this, this was left out of the memo to you, but I remember distinctly. As late, as early as 2019, the city's auditors, every year the city has to submit. And because BIDA is an associated government entity to the city, it's included in the annual audit. The auditor asked for this document that ties the finances that are, have BIDA's name on it, but really belong to the city, to be tied to it. It'd be like me co-signing for my son. There needs to be a document that says, I'm on the note with him. And that's exactly what this is. Now, what, what Attorney Denmark's group has done is put, done that and tried to cover these other issues that need to be addressed. That, that's it. But you've hit the nail on the head that there's, there are parts of this. I'm, I would tell you as your lawyer, BIDA is required. Our auditor will require it. It should have already been done long ago, is just what you're talking about. As then, to point out a little bit of what he said and ask you a question. So I sent the draft that Ms. Wiley did to the auditor, Ellen Doug Moses, and asked him to come on it, comment on it. He loved it. I got an email, I don't have to read it all, but he actually tightened it down a little bit. And he wanted me to add these words, that BIDA's finances shall be reported as a blended component unit. He wanted to add the word blended. And BIDA has been operated as a department of the city. And all of your finances are intertwined into the city's budget and the city's finances. He wanted it to be a blended component unit. The operations of BIDA, which are wholly funded by the city, shall be included in the business-type activities prior to enterprise funds of the city's financial statements, but a blended component unit of the city. So that was his quote back. And so it really is needed because we've been operating on an ad hoc basis for 43 years. But the words that y'all want to do could be different.
Right.
Yes, sure. Where was, where was that language that you just read as a recommendation? Can you tell me where that was?
Don't get dudalatany.
The, the language that you just referenced?
The blended.
We, we've not added that yet because we knew that we were in anticipation of this meeting and hearing whatever other concerns you may, you may have had. We have not added those, that word yet. I did receive a copy of that and it melded well with the proposal. And so it would be added. I can tell you exactly where, but it certainly is in keeping and in alignment with, with what we have proposed to you. So that language flows very nicely.
I think it would be important to know where.
Okay.
At some point.
Okay, good. Okay, and, you know, I just want to commend you, Mr. Wall, as well as Attorney Denmark and Victoria, for being proactive. You know, oftentimes in governance, we forget about cultivation. And this is a part of our cultivation. As the city grows, there needs to be transparency and disclosure and a definitive document that administers or adheres us to how we conduct our financial transactions. My only concern with the document is, I was used to hearing an intergovernmental agreement from board, from authority boards that are not chartered. So they need that intergovernment policy agreement. I think that our charter and our amended charter with the bylaws is very ambiguous when it comes to, we don't have, we, we understand that the mayor and council has to approve the revenue bonds, but it gives us no insight or direction how that is conducted. So I think that this agreement is being established to help us with that ambiguity. So I thank you for what you've done so far. My conflict with the document is it has articles titled, right? Now, our charter has articles because it's mandated, right? It's constitutionalized, right? So I think that we should remove ourselves from restructuring the wording that's within our amended bylaws as well as within our charter on the way BIDA operations or authority should be conducted. I think that that language should stay the same because I think it was done right. I think it's all, you know, within there. There are interchangeable verbiage here that has kind of, it amends that bylaws in that charter. And I can recall when we were, as a board, wanted to bring up an attendance policy. And we were told by Attorney Lee that it would take an act of Congress to change that amendment, you know, in our bylaws. So what I want to make sure is that our charter and our amended bylaws as far as our operations remain intact. I do think that you need a policy for the way the revenue bonds, approval, transaction, allocation, within the budget process and so forth, and who owes the debt and how the conduit transpires, that definitely needs to be identified. But I think that comes through an accounting policy. So based upon, if you let me finish, based upon the policy, the account, the internal counter, the internal finance policy, how that budget and how those transactions in the conduit takes place maybe needs to be identified, if the, if the city doesn't have one already. I would assume that you do because that's the way the budget is prepared, right? And the way we have always conducted business. However, stating that policy in this IGA agreement and rephrasing the operations of BIDA that has already been identified and clarified through our charter and our amended bylaws needs to remain the same. So, but I do agree in this agreement where how those transactions are identified and how they're processed. And at the end of the day, who owns the debt? Who owes it? Who's going to pay it? How, you know, I do think that that definitely needs to be documented. If, I would recommend that this agreement would be presented in our Six Sigma Process Committee and so that we can walk through and kind, you know, and identify, you know, how these transactions or these processes to take place. I think that the way, like I said, the way the charter was created as well as the amended bylaws was created, it was effective. And I commend the people who created it because they really allow the authority board consisting of citizens appointed by their council people to gather, to come together and, and, and create the input from the citizens within the city and have that input in the say-so of economic development and their general welfare. However, I think that that policy remains with mayor and council. How that policy of the approval of the revenue bonds remains with mayor and council. We don't have the authority to approve it. So I don't agree with the part in the IGA that summarizes or changes the charter and the amended bylaws for the operation of the authority board. But I do agree with identifying that how that action relationship's supposed to work as a conduit. And those are my thoughts.
May I?
Yes.
Just to correct, make a couple of corrections. The charter of BIDA is not unique. Every development authority has a charter. It's just that this one was voted on by the people of College Park. Therefore, it can only be changed by the people of College Park. Secondly, the bylaws of BIDA were something that were created by previous boards to help you govern the board. They have no effect on the city. They have no effect on the city employees at all. This document, the IGA, 100% conforms with the charter. And the IGA cannot change the charter of BIDA. And I would submit to you, in our review, I think Winston and his colleagues will agree with me that it does not change the charter of BIDA, nor could it change the charter of BIDA. The only difference in this IGA and any you'll find is what I think has been done, and rightly so, in a very good way, an attempt to address some of the operational things that the city does for BIDA. And that too is needed, but mainly because, remember, the, the origin of this is from the auditor to make certain that you have a clear path to finances. So the payment for employees needs to be covered somewhere in the IGA. And that's what this does, unlike a lot of IGAs with a lot of development authorities. But it 100% conforms with the charter.
What I heard the chairperson ask was that the intergovernmental agreement be changed to reflect what exists in the charter and in the bylaws, not that we change the charter or the bylaws. And so it sounds like if one purpose of this is to reflect what has been requested of the city, that we keep this intergovernment, we can have more than one intergovernmental agreement, I would think. So why don't we keep that one clean to do exactly what the auditors are asking? That everything that it seems is codified already in the way we, we account for the finances? Just codify it in an intergovernmental agreement that deals specifically with what the auditors are requesting. And then if there's a need for a second intergovernmental agreement which talks about the operations of BIDA and how that's captured by the city, do a second intergovernmental agreement. But right now, we're, we're merging the two, I guess, for economy, when that is the sticking point, I think. The operations of BIDA, yes, we want to clearly lay that out. But is that necessary for what, to meet the needs of what the auditors want to be confirmed? Have confirmed for them about our responsibility, our fiduciary responsibility as a board to the city? And, and sort of, I mean, can, can we not do two?
You can, you, you can. I, I think the, the reason that this has been added here is because of this discussion we've had today. Is that there is a, to me, appears to be a tendency of this board, like previous boards, to want to be more involved. And to me, when I read it and put my two cents' worth into it, it looked like a reflection of that notion that you want things documented more than just happening. So if you take that out of this and, and wait to do another to cover that, you could do that. And, but that is what that is, is an attempt to memorialize in writing what, what the real relationship has been and would be. But you're exactly right, you can do, you can do three if you want one.
I think it's a sticking point. That's why I say if this is crucial for the fiduciary relationship and the auditors, I don't think any of us has any problem.
That's a good point.
Anita, what part of the agreement specifically gives you pause?
Relationship of.
Can you tell me what paragraph?
I think it's section two. I mean, we.
Article two.
Article two, I'm sorry.
For me, it's article one and, and article two. For instance, when it says, the Act authorizes BIDA to acquire, construct, develop, operate.
Wait, wait one second. Where are you?
First page of the intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement at the one, two, three, four, five. Whereas the Act authorizes BIDA to acquire, construct, develop and operate projects as defined in the Act with furtherance of fulfilling specific public purpose for which it was created. Well, that's not how it's worded in our charter. Our charter specifically defines our mission, our purpose, our development. So that is summarize, it puts a summary, but whereas our charter clearly defines what our authorization is. So that's a change that needs to be.
What, where, what in the charter? Can you have the charter portion?
If you, I don't have the charter available. But if you look at the charter, the charter and the amended bylaws breaks down the purpose, the mission. It's on our, it's on the city website.
I could have sworn it was this, whereas pursuant to the Act, BIDA was created for the specific public purpose of developing and promoting for the public good and general welfare, trade, commerce, industry, and employment opportunities for the benefit of the public health, safety, morals, and welfare of the city and the residents thereof.
Yes, it may have that in there, but it doesn't have. Whereas the Act authorizes BIDA. So there's a difference where if you look at, if you go back to the charter and it has our authority, our purpose, our mission, it has that, but it's not summarized like this. So, yes.
If I may. I, the language that you're referencing, all the whereas clauses or preambles that sort of lead into the substantive portions of the agreement. And I can assure you, so I, as I indicated earlier, the very first act that I undertook, read the constitutional amendment that created you all and also the, the, the two subsequent revisions thereto. And everything in those, the whereas clauses, it was preamble, which is not legal verbiage per se that's binding, but it sort of leads any reader of this to understand the purpose for which BIDA was created is inconsistent with the charter. There is nothing in the preamble clauses which changes the charter. Projects are defined. And if you look at the whereas clause, where I, in quote, I quote language directly from the charter to define what a project is, acquiring, constructing, leasing, improving, modernizing, remodeling, public facility. This is a direct quote. And so I would urge you to consider, and, and, and due deference to your, your attorney who would tell me without a doubt if I have included language that is in violation of the charter. No doubt he would tell me that, as well as Mr. Denmark would tell me that. But there is nothing in here that is inconsistent with the chart in those preambles. And to an earlier question that you had asked, Madam Vice Chair, the finance language that Ed referenced, that the auditor or the finance individual, auditor, wanted would appropriately be placed under Article One, Section F, that deals with Paragraph F, that deals says, and as written and proposed, it says, BIDA's finances shall be reported as a component unit of the city. The operations of BIDA, which are wholly funded by the city, shall be included in the governmental activities of the city's financial statements as a separate but component unit of the city. And so the language of using blended finances will fit perfectly within. And so, the language of using blended finances would fit perfectly within that particular paragraph, and we could substitute that language that Mr. Mosby suggested right there in Paragraph, Paragraph F, which is already contemplating that very thing, but says it a lot more articulately than I put in. Lastly, Madam Chair, you had mentioned using the word Article One, Article Two. That's just nomenclature that attorneys use in these type of things. I could have very well inserted the term Section One, Section Two, Section Three. If that is a sticking point, then we certainly can swap out the language subject to Mr. Lee's approval, Article One for Section One. If that would make you more comfortable in knowing that we're not trying to supplant what's in the constitutional charter, we are adding, we are putting things in that amplify what's already in the charter and filling in gaps based on how the entities have operated.
Exactly. And I concur with you saying that, because that's where my conflict comes with when you utilize Article One. Well, we have Article One in our charter and our amendment, in amended bylaws. So, does this substitute that? So, I think that's where that confusion lies. And I think that, I understand with the preambles and creating, you know, the summarized agreement. I just think that the way our charter and amended bylaws is, it can flow right into this document as it is, without having the changes to the language. And then, the additional information about the transaction on us being the conduit, yes. Then all of that, because that is not in our charter, because we don't have the approval to do the revenue bonds and the authority to approve revenue bonds, definitely there, yes, I agree wholeheartedly. You need to, the way the information is laid out, but I just think that we should take what is already as is in our charter for our operations, convey that into this, change it to Section One or so forth, leave all the financial conduit piece, because we need that, we don't have it. So that we are not changing the way the authority board was created.
And the last thing I'll add is that this particular proposal does not change your bylaws. It does not. There's no provision in here that changes any bylaws. This body remains responsible for creating and changing and making revisions to your bylaws. This document does not alter that.
No, I understand that. And that's why I was saying, if we kept the language consistent with the language that you took, that you summarized for the preambles from our bylaws in our charter, we can keep that consistent, but still keep what you have in Article One and F to define that relationship and how that conduit is supposed to work.
Madam Chair?
Sure.
If my understanding is correct, I think we're in agreement with this document around every issue except those included in Article Two at this point. For ease of reading, I would really like to see the lines numbered, so that when we're having this discussion, it's easier to just say, "Go to line 141," or whatever. But if I were to propose that we adopt and agree to this with the exception of Article Two, and that that be taken out for the consideration by this board at the present time, and that we revisit at some later point, this is not a motion, I'm talking out loud here, that at some point in time, particularly as we move through our own belly glazing and looking at our processes, we come back and revisit what's contained in Article Two. Because clearly, our processes and our relationship with the city should be as robust and fruitful as it can be. I just don't think this is the proper vehicle for trying to accomplish that. And if it's not necessary to meet the needs that started this whole thing, let's not let that be our stumbling block. So, that's the proposal that I would put.
What in Article Two are you opposed to?
What in Article Two? I'm opposed to the ways in which the relationship between BIDA and the operations of BIDA and the city are described here.
Can you read what part you're opposed to, please?
Oh, it's pretty much everything. I mean, everything from, it may reflect what's happening now, but I'm not so sure that what's happening now is what needs to be happening. So, everything about the executive director--
So, BIDA shall have an executive director who is appointed by the city. You're opposed to that?
I'm not opposed to it. In principle, I'm opposed to the language and the detail, and I'm not prepared right now to digest all of this detail if it's not germane and pertinent to the issue that we're doing this for in the first place.
I have a question for Ed Wong. Ed, is it possible to submit the charter as we have it to the auditor? Would that satisfy the auditor to just submit the current charter without this? This is a question, just a question. Can that satisfy the auditor? Okay.
So, the constitutional amendment gives you powers, how you can issue bonds, and says you can contract with other parties. The operations, you could hire your own auditor. You don't have to use a city auditor. You could hire your own executive director. You don't have to use one the city did. This intergovernmental contract sets out how you do it. The constitutional amendment does not. It just says you can contract. It doesn't say how.
Okay. But we do know, I think what I'm hearing, is we could submit this without the Article Two, meaning without Article Two, will that satisfy the auditor?
So, it really is a negotiation y'all all be talking with mayor and council, between y'all with mayor and council.
And I'm not saying that Article Two is not necessary, or the content of that and codifying that, and that this is not the vehicle for it. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that it's unnecessary, that we don't need to do that.
My concern is that everything that comes up before us, we have a problem with some part of it. And I'm just asking, okay, you have a problem. What is your problem with it? And you said, "I'm not prepared to talk about that."
I said, "I wasn't prepared to delineate it right now. I could talk about it probably for the next four hours."
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
Time and the situation--
Could you just identify one thing in here that you have a problem with?
I have a problem with it codifying our relationship with the Economic Development Department when that is in flux, when that has changed from October to now with the new director, when we are changing our processes and things that happen every day. I don't have any problem with having this intimate relationship and having the city of College Park implement all of that under the capable leadership of our city manager. I just don't feel like that needs to be done here. It does not need to be codified here. And it's not necessary for the purposes for which this document was initially generated.
Could you please just tell me one thing that's written down here that you have a problem with?
Give me five or 10 minutes, and I'll get back to you. I will tell you that. I will do that.
City manager, yes.
First, let me say that I would, I would love to see this IGA as proposed go through. And I also understand, and I think the latest comments and Dr. Anita has been, I think, as honest in getting to probably what the real issue is. I kind of felt like it was Article Two. Article Two probably has more to do with the city manager than any other section. And I think this is an astute board, has astute members, and I think what the chair and some of his members have said, you can have multiple IGA's, you can have IGA's at different times, you can take this one and you can carve it up, take Article Two out, maybe come back to it at a later time. And I think that's probably feasible. I think we need to make some progress. And I think the financial implications from the standpoint of the auditor and the credit rating agency, because they don't want us to lose sight of that. But a lot of the language is dealt with the auditors. But it's also our credit rating agencies. And I don't want to oversimplify this, but what I'm about to tell you, you may already know, but credit rating agencies, regardless of what point that Ed has already made, I'm talking more of a general standpoint, one of the things that credit rating agencies look at when they look at governmental institutions, in fact, a major formation in how they assess what your credit rating is going to be at any given time, is management. It's a significant score in having confidence in management. So, if we say that we're putting together this IGA and we're going to maybe approve some part of it, and we take out a fundamental, important part of it, such as Article Two or Section Two, Chapter Two, whatever you determine that you want to call it, in the overall assessment, it is a major piece that would be avoid in the overall understanding of this relationship with the city, particularly given that we're only memorializing what has been in the past. So, that's kind of a theoretical, could we take Part Two and address it later? We absolutely can. I would be concerned of kicking the can down the road. And maybe what we need to do is to quit trying to be too nice, beat around the bush. Because one of the things that you get with me is not only my candor and transparency, I don't have anything to hide. And every job is important to me, but if I can't be myself and do my job as I believe that it needs to be done, you know, it's not worth it to me. So, you're going to always hear what I really feel. And so, in this four and a half months, going on five months now that I've been here, one of the things that has stood out from my very first meeting, probably before I started, because I looked at some of the other meetings, as a sore thumb, is the relationship overall, from what I've observed, and haven't seen much change, is that the relationship between your management staff or your operations staff, however you want to refer to them, and this board, I think is a big misunderstanding. I don't think people understand the relationships as they should be. It also gets to some of my comments early in the meeting. And so, to the extent that I believe that staff isn't conducting itself in its relationship with the board, because we can always improve, all of us, then that's my job. And the staff here, the larger staff that aren't here, they will tell you on a regular basis, at least every two weeks, really every week, because I have a meeting with them each week. I coach, and I talk about these kind of issues. And the relationship that I've observed isn't as good as it can be and will be in the future. And I think Chapter Two of this IGA is causing some real concern. And I always say, the proof is in the pudding. So, maybe six months from now, a year from now, after I've had a chance to make sure that I'm doing my part, that could be one of the factors that makes it easier to put some section like this in place. Now, I'm also addressing restructuring with the mayor and council. The charter requires that the departments of the organization are created and set by the mayor and council, by the governing body. And they have afforded me in a matter of a few short weeks to come back, and I'm feeling the pressure of getting it done. We've got a lot of work. But I've shared with them a preliminary plan. What I've already shared with them, there probably will not be a department of economic development. So, even if you took this section that from my reading says nothing about the Economic Development Director, probably won't be a position that exists. I think we've got talented staff. I think we've got talented staff sitting here around the table. I think Michelle Alexander, in my assessment, proof is in the pudding. I think she has a lot of skill and ability. And Michelle, I'm just going to reveal this, because it's not something that mayor and council don't already know if they've looked at my restructure. But with this particular staff member, I've pretty much decided that I'm expanding her role based on her experience. So, I might even call it promotional. That she's getting additional responsibilities. That reason, among others, and I don't want to say too much, but I'm probably going to be setting up a different structure for the support that you get. Might it address some of the other issues? I'm a strategic person. So, I may say this on one hand, and this is the basis, and make it seem like expanded responsibilities. Then, on the other hand, there may be other reasons that I'm also making adjustments. So, I feel some of the pain in this relationship. And overall, and I think what this Article Two says, is that the city manager has such a critical role. There will be an executive director if you go with this language, but it will not necessarily look or be what it has in the past. And I'm going to make the relationship healthier, whoever is in that role of executive director. So, I say that to say, this manager would be comforted. I think it would address other issues overall, credit rating agencies, auditor, my own, having something definitive that we're all on the same page. But if you can't get there tonight, I understand.
So, okay. That's Madam Prester.
That being said, thank you for that contribution and having a chance to multitask and look at the description. It is complete, but it does not cover everything that we need to have done for our board administratively. It doesn't, I mean, if what you're trying to do is capture and reassure the auditors that this is a well-run organization, it doesn't talk about our relationship with our attorney and what we need our attorney to do, we're just now starting now with a pro forma. It does not incorporate any of the changes that might follow through from a process review done very systematically, which our chair has put in place. I'd say that this, if anything, needs to be maybe a higher level view of what we need in an executive director, and let us begin to drill down to processes, relationship with our attorney, relationship with other ancillary staff that we need. And if you really need an Article Two in here, shorten it and just assure the auditors that we are going to be the best, most efficient, and well-run organization that would meet the needs for meeting our fiduciary responsibility. But it probably does not need all of this detail, and that's what's most disturbing to me about this article.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'll let the board member go first, because I-- I'll let the board member go first because I work for her.
Okay, so I, I'm a little confused. So before, just to clarify, you had a problem with Article Two and now you're saying you don't have a problem with Article Two, you think it doesn't go far enough. And you'd like to consolidate it down so that later it can go further? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that give the auditors what they need to hear to reassure them that the operations and management can be satisfactorily met. This is not going to be our operations and management manual.
Right, it's not. And the city manager just said he would like to see this approved as it is. And you just said, I don't have a problem with Article Two. It's not an operations manual. It is an agreement that we are signing with the city to memorialize our relationship so that the auditors and the credit rating agencies will feel comfortable with the relationship.
I did not say that I was satisfied with Article Two as written. That, that is not what I meant. If I, if you took that from what I said, that's not what I meant.
And I didn't hear the city manager say that we should submit this, that we should approve this IGA as it is. I heard the city manager say that we should submit what we can submit to move forward with this. And we can continue to work, what I heard was that we can continue to work on.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Is that correct, city manager? I don't know if that's what.
I believe Mr. Hawthorne said that he would like to see it approved as is.
Yes, as a start, recognizing we can come back and add to and adjust.
Exactly. And that, and that was my.
I didn't hear that. I didn't hear it that way.
That was my suggestion, in that if, if we need to amend this IGA with the city, then we can go about doing so. But if there is agreement that this is how the process works, and that is what we're doing now, if upon further examination, this body wants to amend Article Two and we work with council to make that happen, we can do that down the road. But we've spent a good bit of time this evening talking about this and I'll make a motion to approve it.
I, I.
A second.
Are those in favor, there's a motion on the floor, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
So we have three, all those oppose. One, two, three, four. All those abstained? Motion fails. I recommend that we, because this is a draft, we take back the concerns of the members of the board and we make those modifications. And we bring it back. I also think that Mr. Wall, you as our financial advisor and in charge of the revenue bonds, we don't have that language in here. Your positioning interplay, you see? So we also need to include that as well. So like I said, I commend everyone that worked on this. I just think that the board has spoken and, and, and there's, needs to be some modifications.
And so, Madam Chair, will you all mark it up and send to Latonya the changes that you want?
Okay, if we can, sure, sure. We can agree to do that. Okay, thank you, everyone.
And Madam Chair, you're done with me tonight, aren't you?
I'm sorry?
Are you done with me tonight?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am. Thank you very much for your contribution.
Ed, Ed, you, you'll need to tell them about the.
I, I, I wrote it down.
Oh, was there something else pertaining to this item? Okay, so we can move on to our next item is our GICC update.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, for July, our year just started. We are always slow during the summer. So the GICC's revenue was only about 12.3%. Excuse me, my eyes are way over 50. Okay, total operating revenues are at 3.8% for GICC and 12.53 for the arena and 11.3 for the golf course. So as we can see, we're in the middle of the dream season for the arena. So their revenues are well and it's the best golf time. So their revenues are well. The GICC will kick up about September. Highlighting some of the groups that we have, for the month of July, we had the dinosaur adventure. Jose Williams Back to School, they decided to take their event back down to their office. We did have the Ivy Sports Management. So this is the peculiar thing. We had the bar exam and then we had the National Association of American Gun, yeah, National African American Gun Association. And then we had the National Funeral Directors, all in, in a couple of weeks. So that was pretty exciting. For the Atlanta Dream, the Atlanta Dream has had 10 games that were sold out. So everybody's talking about the Dream. Their season is coming to an end, but we'll probably go into the playoffs. This month also, I think I told you last month, that the Hawks are going to have one of their preseason games here, which is October the 5th. So that'll go out for advertisement this month. Also, the DMO were sponsors for American Society of Association Executives, which are people who book trade shows and meetings. So they had an event over at Porsche. So I think we booked three events from that. So that was a pretty good event. And then for the arena, we were a practice facility again for Money Bag Yo, whoever that is. He's having a concert down at the arena, I mean, at State Farm. So they practice here at, at our arena. So our arena is becoming a great place for, for practices. This month, again, the funeral directors continued. Kids Fest was wonderful. We had a lot more people than that. And I'll go into that more next month. We had the Beauty Expo, that was a one-day event. Southwest Christian Hospice, this is one of the largest dinners that we have. And this is their first time back since hospice, I mean, since, first time back since COVID. So it's good to have them back. SMU Steel, this is another group that's coming back since Co, since COVID. Let's Go Weekend, and then we have the Dream Games. We have five games during the month of August. Over into September, we have the Box Truck, Box Truck Convention. They would be using the parking lot as well as the inside of the building. Then we have the Black Art Expo. Delta is bringing their event back. That's their big event that they do here in the ballroom. Where we feed 1,500 people in less than 45 minutes. Reptilian Nation is coming back, Elite and Duel. And then G3, G3 is a national religious conference. They were here before COVID, so they're coming back as well. And they usually have between eight and 10,000 people. I think that's all, other than we are pleased RSVP for the ATL District for their annual meeting. I know everybody got an invitation. So please RSVP for that. And then I have been asked to be a speaker in September for Venue Now. It is where all the people that do esports, so I'm hoping to steal some business when I go there for esports to be, sit on a panel. And we did get Chick-fil-A will start the first of October. They did add some meal functions, which will increase the revenue. So we do have a two-year contract with them. I met with the people in the back of us from the troop. They are doing very well. They opened up with about 35% occupancy, which is pretty good for a new hotel. So I walk over and check on them. They're, they will be sold out for the, for the G3 conference. So they're building up their occupancies. Are there any questions?
If there are no questions, I always give you your accolades. Thank you. You put the meeting in, booked in busy, which is awesome for our city. Thank you very much for your contribution, Mercedes. Now we shall move on to our economic development reports.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So I'll be reading it off of here. I apologize, I don't have slides today. So our economic development and Six West update is as follows. Staff has been working on the planning and preparation for the renaming for Lottie Miller Boulevard, scheduled to take place on September 2nd. The work involves working with community members and cross-departmental coordination with building permits, GICC staff, power and the engineering program manager for the construction project. A save the date notice has been issued and will be followed by official media notice soon. We encourage the community to come out and join for that event as well. Also, staff has been meeting regularly with Stream Realty and we're now successfully under contract. And they're serving as our commercial real estate broker to market and negotiate sales for Six West. Our Stream Realty and the city and BIDA worked to put out a press release announcing this, which generated really positive coverage in Urbanized Atlanta, Biz Now, and we've received inquiries from several other outlets as well.
We have two additional interviews this week with Axios and with the Atlanta Business Chronicle. So their one press release has four articles generated on top of that. And so this is just the beginning of feeding for putting together the marketing strategy.
And I, I've spoke with some members of Stream and they've been receiving really great feedback too from that announcement. And they're getting a lot of good feedback on their end as well. So our first action items, including the relaunch of the website, the Six West website, an updated market assessment of the master plan, uses and end users, and developing a strategic marketing plan to mayor, council, and BIDA. Also have an update on our Main Street program from our Main Street manager. So the Main Street manager, Ginger Melton, oversaw the College Park Main Street Association's membership drive of July 19th with the intention to increase funds and merchant involvement by offering business owners incentives to join College Park, to join the College Park Main Street Association. I've been told that we have seven new members for their College Park Main Street Association, which is really wonderful. Manager Melton facilitated the ribbon cutting of the leading Promise Foundation Community Food Bank, reports the completion. She also reports the completion of the Virginia Avenue Bridge mural and launched this year's Tinsel Trail Event with the sale of seven trees during the Christmas and July campaign, raising awareness for the winter event. Party of Five and Buttermilk Biscuit, these are two new businesses located at Virginia Station that have just recently opened, which is wonderful. 3787 Main Street, so this was the old College Park Shoe Store. It was sold, I believe that closed at the end of June. Sold to a new owner to be converted into a medical use with subdivided units in the rear, according to the property owners. That concludes my update.
Thank you, Ben, very much for that contribution. That leads us into our seventh agenda item, other issues. The first issue that I added was Stream Realty. So I know that the press releases have been released, but I don't think that we all were copied on those press releases. So I would like for us to be, for the board to be incorporated in any of those press releases. I also would like, I guess, the information also to come from Stream, you know, and, and for them to, you know, be able to, once those releases are released, for them to communicate to the board that this is what, you know, has been done and so forth. In reference to the the other question that I had with Stream, so are we planning on having an introduction of the team officially to the board?
Yes, so they're excited to come here and to introduce their whole team to the board because there might be a few members that haven't met them yet. One of their chief brokers was not available today and they wanted to make sure that he was here for that. So I'm going to check their schedules and we'll see if they're available for the next meeting. But they are very excited to, to meet everyone and talk about progress.
Excellent. That answers all my questions there. Moving on to the next item, the strategic planning, Six Sigma Planning Meeting. So at our agenda meeting with Michelle, she informed us that the state board authority training, that advanced training, is currently not available. So they're still working on.
Yes, ma'am. We, they had not just given us a date. And so we had this exchange. It seemed unreasonable to me. I was sharing with you and I regret that. That so much back and forth since May. And so last week, they said, again, we'll provide to you by next, you know, in a few days, a deadline, you know, a date certain and the agenda for the advanced training. Because I guess Board Member Mackenzie, you've had the advanced training and no one else has. And they still don't offer it as a routine offering every year for several years now. And so I just regret the delay. I'd like to next step, ask them to recommend alternative and allow, you know, we, we just need to get an alternative in here. It feels absurd. But meanwhile, I know you had some additional ideas.
Yes, so what I was thinking was if since, if there will, if there isn't a delay with the advanced training, then let's institute our Six Sigma planning process. And Dr. Katus, I guess if you would like to.
I just wanted to say, I've tried to work with staff. I've sort of gone through some of my records to see what I can glean from that. But what we'll be looking at, I think, is a template that probably identifies five or six projects across the board and will track. It's a paper trail, but sort of do a.
I'm sorry, are you, I, I'm not following you. You're talking about doing an assessment of a given letter of interest? Like a specific project or are you talking about?
Looking at the process from the beginning when someone submits an inquiry, in, in, inquires about a property.
Yes, ma'am.
And moving through the letter of interest. And then from the letter of interest to the PSA, and then from the PSA through the completion of the project.
Sort of audit some real life examples in the past, is that what you're saying? How some have gone in the past? Is that what you're asking?
Probably look at five or six projects to say, okay, what date was this? What did the paperwork like?
Right, right. Like the profile of a, of a prior process, well, a couple, you're saying around five.
Some that went straight through, some that didn't. It's, it's just a good way to do metrics on the process.
Audit what happened, where, lessons learned on each one of those and audit, audit the timeframe and turn around.
There's a pretty structured way to go through the process, but yes.
And if anyone isn't familiar with the, just the identity segments of Six Sigma, the high level is to define the process, measure the process, analyze it, improve it, and then control it. So it can be duplicated, right? So that's just the purpose of us taking the few projects that we have in hand and what has thus been conducted with them and see where we can document.
So our first step is defining what is the process?
What is, exactly.
What, what is the process? If I came to you today to say I want to.
And you mean separate from the process we provided you of
No.
the administrative process when an applicant submits right, so the guideline, when an applicant submits what happens from day one, that document, that walks through.
It's the process as is, as it actually occurred, not the process that we have written on paper, which may or may not have been followed. So you're defining the process as it actually occurred with real life clients.
I see. On, on specific actual project, excuse me, projects that have come through the, our system. Okay.
Exactly. So I guess our action items would be, Dr. Nita, will you contact?
Yes.
Ben or Michelle to start the initiation of what those projects will be? And then we can identify the action items from there. So that's all that I had for those items. Now, Mr. Evans, thank you very much for attending our meeting. Please continue with your.
Thank you. Well, the question is, first of all, my first question is, how was the BIDA committee established? And how many individuals make that BIDA committee? Could anyone answer that?
So you're referring to the establishment of our board?
Right.
And that is, that is specifically defined in our charter and it's also disclosed on our city website. It consists of seven members. And four of those members are appointed by their prospective council members. And the other three members will include mayor, mayor pro temp. And then we have the designated member, member at large. So those, that's the consistency of what the board consists of.
Okay.
And it is on our, it is disclosed on the city's website under the BIDA. And it is on our, it is disclosed on the city's website under the BIDA department.
Second, how long has this BIDA committee been in play here in College Park?
Yeah, forty, yeah, forty, is it forty-something years?
Forty years.
Yes, forty, exactly. The constitution was...
Earlier than 2000, that's for sure.
Okay, gotcha.
Say that again, Councilman?
I said earlier than 2000. I don't know the exact date, but it's been around a long time, Larry.
Okay. My next question is about the Six West property. I myself, I feel as though I sit right in the middle of what's being turned into Six West. And I would like for someone to give me a little insight on what grandfathered in means, because the mayor before Jack, Longino and I, we talked about it at the council meeting, that if you're grandfathered in, that means that you can be there at wherever your grandfathered in, and regardless of what's being built around you. Could anyone give me a little insight on what grandfathered in really means?
Does any, I would defer to our attorney, but he's stepped out. Does anyone from mayor and council have any information on what that interpretation, grandfathered in means? We should probably wait on attorney Lee. Okay. So once, okay, I don't know if he...
Well, in general, what grandfathered in means is that, you know, you don't...
I can respond to the typical use of grandfathering. Typically relates to a zoning matter, that your zoning use is allowed to continue, even if things change. So by zoning, that just means the use of your property. So you may be grandfathered to be allowed to continue your use in peace and have full right, even though things are changing around you. So I'm not sure, I don't know if that's what the intent was when the comment was made. I can only explain what it means with zoning, that when you're grandfathered use, that means no one can force you to change your use just because things are changing around you, just because the city sells property around you and develops it around you.
All right. Thank you for that answer. My other question is this. The city BIDA, this committee, it has purchased majority of the land there in Six West. And I remember back in, I think it was 1985, '87, when the city came in saying the airport abatement program was purchased the property there. So a lot of the residents, they moved out with the intent that the airport was coming in. And the airport purchased all the property around me and my whole community. But now, years later, it seems as though the airport has given the property back to College Park? Or you purchased it back from the city?
Why don't you take that one?
Yes.
Larry, the, the airport and FAA, Atlanta and the FAA contributed to the purchase of the property. When it was back in the 1980s, I don't remember the year. It was before my time, at least in College Park.
This is true.
So they purchased it then. The city bought that land back. All the time that I've been on council, which is 16 years almost now, we have been buying back that land from the city of Atlanta. And we're talking, I don't remember the totals now. I think it's something like $30 million, let's just say. And we bought that land back. But that land cannot be used for residences in most places, because when the land was bought from the residences, and when it was sold back to the city, there is a caveat on the deed that says it cannot be used for residential use. So you're an exception, because you never sold out to the airport, which was really the Atlanta and the FAA working together to buy your property or trying to buy your property. On my home, and I'm on Lisle, on my home, I have a restriction on my deed that says I cannot complain about airport noise. It doesn't say it's, it can't be used as a resident, but it does say that I can't complain about airport noise or pollution or anything like that. And that was part of the deal that the owner of my house made with the airport in order to secure noise insulation. And part of that noise insulation was putting in air conditioning and putting in double-pane windows, or actually, yeah, double-pane windows. In this case, they put storm windows over the regular windows. And I think they probably put additional insulation in the attic, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't pick up that noise. Does that, does that help clarify?
Well, to a degree, it does. But also, in that same package that they gave to the individuals who was there, they said that if the individual wanted to move their home, they would have to pay the airport abatement program, or they couldn't move their home if they wanted to just move their home to another property or another location. That was a stipulation, or if you sold your home to someone else, that they was entitled to a percentage. I think I still have that document in store, but...
You know more about that particular thing than I do.
This is true. The other thing is, where I am, I don't know if I'm sitting on residential or commercial. I don't know where the boundaries are. So my thing is, if I, if I decide not to sell my property back to the city and say hypothetically, if a company or someone comes in and say, well, hey, I would like to purchase this property, and do I have the right to sell to that individual in opposed to selling to the city? Because from my experience, when it first started, the airport came in and got that property for peanuts, so to say. The people, they didn't have real insight, information on the value of their property, nor did they have anybody to represent them, to organize them, to say, well, hey, you all, you're not forced out, but if you're willing to sell your property, we would purchase it. Nobody gave them that kind of information. And so they thought that the airport was expanding. So they took the peanuts and ran with that. That's the way I see it to be, as time has unfolded. Hindsight is 2020. So for me, I like to get what I feel that I've suffered for, for my property of being there, to see my city destroyed, a whole community gone, on a concept that the airport was expanding. And that hurts. I don't know where you all are from or how you grew up, but I'm sure you, you all took pride in where you're from, and that you all have moved here to College Park to make a better life for yourself. But for those of us, and I'm not the only, I'm the only homeowner that still lives in my original home that I grew up in. I'm the only one there, but there's other families who still own property there in Six West. And they don't know what to do, because no information is going out to inform them. But they are getting calls from, I guess it would be the BIDA committee or the city real estate attorney or whoever calling to purchase this land. And I experienced that with our church. We have a church that was there in College Park on Columbia Avenue. We still have that property. And the, the city, I don't know who it is that wants to purchase that property. So I, I'm just trying to get a little bit more insight of what's really going on. And as city manager, I applaud you, that you coming in with a clean new slate. You ain't with the South, you ain't with the North. You're neutral and stay fair. Want for the goose, what you want for the gando. And I think it'll bring peace. But living here, history has taught me that there are some who stands on the side of the North, and there's others who stand on the side of the South. And you're still fighting the Civil War to see who's gonna rule or who's gonna have more power or money or whatever. But if you're here working for money and not to work to better your lives and your family and to, like you say, live, work, and play, but you all left off the main ingredients. What we had in Six North was to pray, because your destination is back with where you come from. If you pride yourself on high-grade paper, because that's all money is, is high-grade paper, you're gonna fumble the ball. Because I've seen that. History teaches me that. And I'm not talking about anyone in here. I deal with history. History has told me that politicians are some of the world's greatest lions. And it's true. I'm not saying you all are that. But be mindful of the seats that you sit in, because you were elected to serve. So as a citizen, I feel as though you all work for us. So as you was hired, you could be fired. Don't think that no saying, it's not what you know, it's who you know. Well, who you know can be torn down along with you. Because when it all settle, I have people in high places too. And I call him my old father. And I think he could deal with each one of you who have taken these seats and feel as though you're privileged. Or you, you got some kind of people who sit in high places that you can't be removed. But I say to you tonight, life, you could be removed. As you was put in, you could be put out. So I hope and say that this body, this new transformation that I see in College Park, I've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly. And it's still bickering. You all act though, act as though you're little children in a sandbox. And who's gonna have more authority? Who's got the more intellect? That don't mean nothing. Your intellect don't mean nothing. It may mean something to you, but when you get home and you look in the mirror, what type of character are you really? And that's something you gotta ask yourself. Nobody else can answer that. Are you doing it to be seen? Are you doing it for the money? Or are you doing it to help humanity? To help people who's not as fortunate as some of you are with your degrees? I'm sure all of you got degrees somewhere, BS, all types of degrees. But is that higher than humanity? Is that higher than caring for the less who don't have what you have? Or do you think you better because you sit in certain positions and you can go around the planet of the earth? From my understanding, we all created equal. I think we all go to the bathroom the same way. If you all go to the bathroom and relieve yourself another way, I sure like to see it, because I think we all is equal here. So let's treat each other equal and stop and put your egos in your pipe and smoke it. Because ego just mean ease God out. And from what I see, all I see is who gonna rule. My intellect, my money, it can't do nothing. They number high-grade paper. And I don't mean to hold the meeting up any longer, but you'll be hearing from me again, because, again, I'd like to know where I'm sitting. Am I on commercial or resident? And I, I'd like to get a little bit more clear understanding. But I thank you, Chair.
Yes.
And I thank you all for listening to what I have to say. Thank you.
And I thank you, Mr. Evans. Definitely greater for, so much for your input. We really need to hear that. We definitely have representation when it comes to the acquisitions in Six West and where you reside. So I think that if the Economic Development Director can contact Keller Williams management and see if we can have some follow-up for him to understand where his positioning is with his residents.
Absolutely. And we have contact to build on what we started discussing in our office maybe two or three weeks ago with a group. So absolutely. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We value your input and your contribution tonight. Thank you.
And thank you all, and may God continue to bless you all.
Same to you. Thank you. Okay. Now, may we take a motion to exit a regular session, enter into executive session to discuss real estate and litigation?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye? Aye. Okay. Let's resume in five minutes, so... Thank you. Now, may we request a motion to exit executive session and enter into regular session?
No moves.
Do we have a sec? Okay, second for members in. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now, may we have the reading of the...
Just the approval.
Just the approval for the motion, the reading of the motion.
Oh, you want the, okay.
I'm sure I move to approve the executive session minutes.
Thank you. Yes. The...
We gotta vote.
Yes, so you seconds, members in. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion passes. Now we may have the reading of the motion.
Yes, there is a motion to authorize the BIDA chair to approve the Good Places Second Amendment to the Real Property Purchase and Sales Agreement.
So moved by McKenzie.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, great. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes successfully. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned at 11:10 PM. Thank you.